Um, can we have a floor?
We do.
Thank you.
We have all members present.
Thank you. Did everyone have a chance to look at the consent agenda? Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Did you have any questions?
I may move that way except these minutes as presented.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Who, pardon me, which?
She has motion. A second. Okay, thank you. Um, so let's go ahead and show hands of approval. Okay, and I guess there's no rejections of that. Thank you very much. Does that have any questions about the minutes? Okay, thank you. All righty. So first thing on our agenda are, um, next thing on the agenda is announcements. Who has any announcements? We'll start with you, Miss Deb. I think I have. I hope I have an announcement. Okay.
Um, Kathy? Um, I started working on the cash at the community center.
Uh huh.
Fred Meyer had sleeping bags himself for seventeen dollars a piece. And I've been looking for bags for that facility. And so I bought twenty bags and saved under fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All righty, how about you? Anything? I have a couple of announcements. Um, Kathy, I went to the emergency preparedness fair that was in Walport on Saturday. And they had made, we didn't know what it was. We don't, we didn't know that would be like an event or what? That was like eleven to twelve thirty, I believe. And they had a lot of giveaways, a lot of tables, a lot of supplies. And they were telling us about supplies. Uh, we saw Samantha Buckley, which was nice to see. And I asked a few people about Walport's emergency preparedness committee. And they don't have one. And it seems like, um, the event was at the local Mormon church. And they have a preparedness committee. And so that's what the city uses. And so it was at the church. And it was very nice. And Kathy and I took some, Kathy took some pictures of different ideas. We got some good ideas of all things for activities for children, like when we have an event, little games and things like that, we can make it into place, which is nice. Um, but the night out, we had a good, many people that came by and talked to, um, talked to us about that. And we explained what we were trying to do as a committee. And a lot of people seemed to be interested. I met someone by the name of Roxanne Kelly. And so she is part of the, you know, the emergency preparedness. And evidently, they just gotten started. It was nice to talk to her and we exchanged information. And so we need to get together sometimes and share ideas, which is probably good. And let's see. So that's another thing to mention is that I'm starting to create content for a calendar, for preparedness, for the community. And I think these pieces and work can also be used for content for our city webpage. So just to let you know, I've been working on that. And maybe the next meeting, I'll be able to show you what it has up on. And let's see, who else? How about you, really, what do you have?
You know, I don't really have anything except what I shared with you earlier that I did. I thought I emailed it once already, but maybe I haven't yet the, uh, the script and the log that we use to do our monthly communication, radio communication thing in Little Whale Cove.
Uh huh.
Uh, so again, it's not ready to pass out to everybody because we've got to take the names of all members off, except for the three of us. It said we'd be very happy to be a part of it. I don't know what kind of communications we have. But down the road, you might, you know, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, I think we should. I think we need to, um, when things settle down and everybody's on vacation, all that stuff, we can make that into the agenda item. But I was able to print one page. I didn't see two pages.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's two pages. One, one page is a script that we use.
Yeah, I see.
So anybody could run the, the roll call. Or it's the same thing we would do with an instant.
Yeah.
So there's something, there's a little script there that talks about how to start it and, and what to say. And then there's a, basically a chart to enter. We have areas, we have fifteen areas in Little Whale Cove. And so we have somebody to check in on each area.
That's great.
Ready to agree and all that kind of stuff.
I didn't get the scripts, although Kathy will see that sometime. And Deb, you can have something similar for your, don't you?
Right. It's our function. Thanks. So, were you at the meeting with Michael Dane at Little Whale Cove on Saturday? Because we had our meeting with him, right, recorded.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he came for you guys.
Right.
You had to make him wait.
Pardon?
You made him wait.
Yeah, well. Uh oh. You know, I was, I was sorry. I haven't made it.
It's okay. It's okay.
And if you have something like that, it's so good. You have one, you can help. But that's something we can all, we can all definitely learn. So that's good. Um, so Kathy, have a question. Um, I know we have a visitor. Can we have public comments now in case?
You're the presiding officer. Yeah, I think concurrents of the rest of the committee. You may change your order.
Whatever, okay? So, so Bill, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. But if you'd like to address the, um, the committee now, if you'd like to, that's fine. Sure. You like a way down in the agenda.
So my name is Bill, Stella. I live in four oh five Southwest Coast. And I'm also a city council member.
Uh huh.
And I, I just would like to talk to the committee about cash placement. In particular, there's this dying need to put a cache on the northwest side of the city. And we're willing to spend more money than we need, than we need to. And it's larger space than we need to, um, to have a place to put a cache. And I'm just curious what the process was for the committee to go through to find appropriate locations? Because on the July sixteenth council meeting, Brady specifically said that they have an equipment storage building up on the Depot Bay Hills that could potentially be used for that. I own property down there that, um, I was never approached about putting a cache on, on a piece of property that we have up behind the whale inn. There are two or three lots available on Williams Avenue that if this property, which was not listed anywhere, didn't have any kind of visibility, I'm assuming those other properties, the one behind the, the Four Winds, um, there's another one at about the three hundred block of Williams that's an empty, an empty lot. I'm just curious what that process was to all of a sudden come up with a property that's bigger than we need and more expensive than we need to present to the councils, how the councils try to.
So those are all good questions. Hope I remember all of them. Uh, this property was first brought to our attention in a city council meeting with Lindsay Beddington. The property was close to where she lives. But she, um, her degree is in geography, so she has a lot of planning experience. And so she sold the lot, kicked it into the post office and her next door to the post office. And she looked it up to see what she could find out about it. Or, and she actually didn't look it up. She gave me the coordinates. So I went to the county website and looked it up. We liked the idea of where it is, um, next to the post office. We thought for a cache, it would be ideally suited because everyone knows where the post office is. That would be a logical title for that particular cache. We liked the idea of not only putting a cache there for us, but it was a good location for the possibility of, of helping Rollmark. Because we know that they're not preparing anything, the less we've heard. We don't know what that looks like. We don't know what they're going to do eventually with anything. But we thought if they are willing to have a cache there and pay for it, pay for the goods and what day, that would be something to, to work with them. Uh, my concern is if they're not going to do anything, they're going to come to the citizens of Depot Bay for help. And so I'd rather have them take the responsibility of having the cache. So that's why that location was good. We liked the location. Quite frankly, we never looked at other property because we thought that was ideal. The property seemed to be in place with the price of that property. There was another price, there was another piece of property close to Lane that was larger and right about the same equal square footage. It was more expensive. We didn't need anything that large. I felt that the price was okay because the, the price was from the latest county tax assessment. So we thought the price was probably in line. So no, we didn't look at anything else. I don't know that it hurt just to do that because we thought that the property was name recognition and in good location for us. So did you have other questions?
Well, I just, um, so, I mean, obviously, we're, we're doing items of caches.
Uh huh.
And, um, you know, with all of the caches, kind of all of the protocols. And this city has a hard time getting people to volunteer for anything.
Uh huh.
So now we're going to have, what was it, number eight? Caches or whatever?
We're not sure.
Whatever that number is. So now we have to have a sanitation protocol, an evacuation protocol. We have to have security for each one of those caches. I'm just questioning, when all hell breaks loose? The reality of this whole thing is that people who are, it's going to turn into what would happen in like New Orleans. And you've got looters that are going to come in and they're going to want to take everything and sell it to the people that need it, et cetera, et cetera. And so we've got all of our city resources now being distributed to various locations with limited resource to be able to manage all of these things. And I get it, there's nothing on the northwest side. I also think it's a great idea to have caches. I'm just questioning the, the idea that we, we think that the caches are the wherewithal and end all to the tsunami, when in reality, I mean, I think we have two hundred people that we can serve today. So we're going to get about a tenth of the population at any given time here in the city of people, they will have eight or nine thousand people in the summer. And I think it was you that actually said at the council meeting that we need to be able to respond to the citizens. But does that mean we're going to have a roll call? And the only people that we're going to serve when they come for an emergency is a citizen? When they show up and they need water or food?
No, we'll, we'll serve anybody. But let me answer another question you have regarding Hills of Depot Bay. That is not, the area is not ready to put a cache on. They don't have an HOA. When they do, I know Kimberly's been, um, and Brady had been in contact with the people that when they have an HOA, that's the time that we can.
But Brady, Brady specifically said they have an equipment storage space that is plenty large.
It's not, it's not built yet.
He said there's a maintenance building for their equipment at the water tower.
I don't know. I, I was.
Anyway.
I, I, Kim, do you know? Is there a question?
I don't think that's been built. Yeah, I think that's the phase two that hasn't gotten approved yet. But there is a plan. And I've spoken to Mr. Beddington recently, a week ago, shortly after our last meeting. And they have not done phase two. He did confirm there will be, they will make sure there's a spot up there for us. But, but it's not close. He said it's a year out, maybe? Which is better than we had before. But we're still talking some kind of ways. They haven't even submitted phase two yet.
So to, thank you, Kathy. To your question about protocols, the protocol that we got from Hatfield Science Center is very, it's good information. But, um, I have started looking as to how the protocols will apply to our committee in our city. And so I have a presentation for this committee now as to how I see it. We can't use all the protocols. It makes no sense for us to use all the protocols that they have because they'll have nine hundred people on the rooftop. We won't have that. And I think they're looking for like two days before evacuation. We think it will be maybe two or three weeks without evacuation. So that's what we've been, been told. So we're trying to have things that can last a couple of weeks, you know? And that's why we want to have submitted caches. We don't want to have a central cache location because they might not be able to be accessible to all the people. And that's why I wanted to make sure that we had, had some, had something on that into town. And your concern about looting and things like that, Deb, would you like to address?
Yeah, thanks. That's how you saw me coming on my team. It, it, uh, the fear tactic of using that kind of propaganda is really inappropriate. Uh, your friend, Councilman Rick, actually is the one that shared this book with me, which I'm happy to share with you, that talks about that in an event that people really don't become. And yes, there is, um, uh, media about what happened to Katrina and how to remodel this looting. I would caution you to spread, um, spread that fear tactic because in a real event, and I am a Red Cross volunteer, and I have manned several shelters in the, uh, Gulf Coast area, um, that is not what people do.
That was a very eye opening book because.
Because it's one, it's, it's the propaganda that's out there. It's about, people are afraid anyway in an event. And to build on that fear of what you just said just gets me going because it's not how it really is. The opportunities that come out sadly out of these kind of events are much greater than just being afraid about looting and that looting would be a reason why we wouldn't be prepared to serve the folks out of Rollmark or anywhere else in the Depot Bay area. So I'd just say, take that out of your little presentation about whatever this is, about what you don't like, what we're doing about the caches, remove the fear about looting because that is way off base and I encourage you to read that book.
Okay.
Okay. But you're talking about valuable resources. Things that I agree with that. That's a lot of money. But I think that, you know, this committee's been gathering ideas for about four years. These are the best ideas we have right now. We did invent the cache idea. Lincoln City has it. I'm not, I don't know about Newport. But, um, a lot of places along this coast, as well as in California, Washington do, are doing the very same thing. Seaside is a, is a place that we really look to for ideas, quite frankly, because they are way, way ahead of us as far as supplying caches. And barrels in people's homes, you know, with supplies and things like that. We're learning from all of our sister cities to make sure that we are doing the best we can, which is not.
And that would be an awesome thing if this committee would educate the people. That's, that seems to be what I don't get from this committee is, I know you exist and I know what your mission is, but, um, so we have a, we have a barrel in our garage. And our barrel, we, we procured it and found where we could get it. It's waterproof barrel. We filled it with our sleeping bags, our medical supplies, it's got our water. But it's, it's our barrel and we're responsible for it. We take it personally that, you know, this is what we have to do in order for us to be able to survive. And I would encourage this committee to look at partnerships with vendors and say, you know what? This is a, this is a place where you can get this type of a piece. These are the supplies we recommend that you get in here. And here's some, here's some vendor choices. But you move the responsibility from the city, which the reality is, is that the city's never going to be able to provide enough resources for two weeks for eight thousand people. It's just not going to happen. And so, um, you know, people need to take some personal responsibility. And I would say that this committee should be communicating those kinds of things to the, to the citizens.
We are going to. We did. Um, we, I think you read our last meeting when I explained when we have had the community center, what our committee has been doing and what we plan to do. Um, maybe we can have more of those, but I don't know what else I can do to get the message out. I do, we'll show you something that I'm working on.
Randy had a comment also.
Okay, yes, Randy, I'm sorry.
Now, I'm, I'm new to the, to this task room, so I don't have the history of, of all of this. But one of the things that did come to light for me is that with the recent report and research with OSU, which we've gotten, you know, we are now starting to use the terminology of islands and such, that is kind of the, the word for the West Coast right now is developing that. And I know that's one of the motivations behind the caches. But the report isn't totally done yet. And it's not, and so I feel like eventually, probably within a year, I think, we'll be more prepared to be doing a broader information. Because really, a lot of the stuff that came from OSU's researches was, I don't want to say new, but it definitely added details.
Definitely updated.
Details to really like, so when we're looking at cache sites, and I don't, again, I don't know about this most recent one. But there is that need because of the reality that they now know is that we're going to have isolated islands and, uh, within the whole, not, not water islands, but islands from excess.
Right.
And such. And so what's need is, I think, uh, we're still waiting for, uh, I think it's going to be September, October, she said, before they can give us a report because they're actually using our county as their pilot program for this whole thing. And so, um, I'm, I'm hoping looking forward, we'll have a lot more things, including the rent, the, uh, the proxy barrel storage system.
Right.
Um, where people who don't have a garage and all that kind of stuff, condominiums and such, can arrange with a proxy who does have the space to have the barrels. And so, again, helping do like you, taking some personal responsibility, but I have no place to put it, but now we also have.
We can.
So some of that's in the works, but, you know, again, it is my question.
Takes time. So Randy is with Local Cove at HLA. Carrie was with Stoner and HLA. And I did this with Young Bay. And so these, these are kind of a core of what we're learning on how to do it. Because Kathy and Lindsay and I started this committee, what, four years ago? We had no experience whatsoever. So I really think that the, the people that joined this committee the last several years have helped us try to figure it out. I don't know what we're doing. No, you, it's Kathy.
I, I just wanted to also reiterate that we do have plans. We're going neighborhood by neighborhood. And now we're trying to develop phone tree, um, in each neighborhood. And so that's part of our goals also for communication, is getting each neighborhood together and trying to get them to know one another and get their phone trees established. Deb has got this all done up at Young Bay. And, um, it's going to, she says it's working beautifully. So we do have definite goals. And we just, we'll have a need time and, uh, Matt, how?
And then, you know, our, our minutes will reflect over the last several months that every month we talk about, and so then how will this look on the website? Because once the website, after the first year, January one, this committee plans on having a whole thing come out about how to be personally and individually involved. Right now, communication, and if you plan it out, it's really hard to get the word out there. But once that we've got something like the website that really is up and going, so it's, I, I feel like a year from now, you're going to see a lot more community education. We're just trying to tee that up.
Yeah. I mean, the, the, the real purpose was, it just seems like an awful lot of money for not a lot of benefit. That's, that's all I'm saying.
And the, the course that we altered from OEM about the two weeks ready. Yeah. Which is filtering out and just like what we are all just talking about, right?
I don't, I don't question the validity of the committee at all. I mean, I think it's important. I just think that it's an awful lot of money to spend for a small benefit that could potentially be put in other places. That's all.
Well, it's, it's, it's a, a lot of money to spend if we don't need it, that we don't know if we'll need it. And so we're trying to prepare in the case it's going to happen next month or next year. That's why we have more emergency and I think some people, some citizens, because we, we want to be prepared if it happens soon. We don't know if it will, maybe in another forty years. I hope so. So one thing, just to answer your question, I haven't even shared this with, I shared with Kathy, but I haven't shared it with, um, the rest of the committee. So you're talking about communicating webpages. So I've come up with calendar information as well as, um, information for our, for our, um, content for our city website. So January, I have information about, um, uh, how to get ready, you know, the things you need to get ready. February, end of life checklist, is something that people don't think of. I'd like for people to be aware of what you need to do. March would be other, um, getting things together, not so much what you need, but how you do it, how you find out what you need, plans. Um, April, I've come up with, um, flooding, you know, because what happens in a flood, what do you do? We don't necessarily have that problem here, but we could. May's going to be, um, similar. It's going to be, um, water safety, boating safety, swimming safety. April, I'm June, rather, how to take care of your plants, what, um, pits, what to do with that. July, I have information on fire safety. Um, it would be August night out, something that we've done for a couple of years, is educating the population about how they can be self-preserved. Um, September, um, school safety. Yeah, children, you know, are you teaching them how to be safe and what to look for? How to get this through and back. Um, in October, we have the annual shakeout, which we've been doing a couple of years. November would be food safety, kitchen safety. Um, December, holiday safety, like Christmas trees and don't have fires about, I don't know, just different, different ways to be careful. So these are things that, there's a lot of things that are behind the scenes, Bill, that we don't necessarily know about because we haven't really protected them yet. But we're trying our best to work in several different areas, just trying to figure it out.
So can you really not question the committee at all as far as, as far as what you're doing? I, I think it's all the right.
Uh huh.
I just, I question the expenditure of a hundred thousand dollars for a lot that you clearly said is more than we need. It's larger than we need. It, it's not, it's not, um, ideal for what we absolutely have to have. And, um, the city's not going to need that lot for anything.
Well, they might. They, they might.
They might, yeah.
Well, there, there's talk of having community gardens there, you know? I think it'd be a great idea.
I mean, I'm just one voice and I'll be one vote on the, on the council. So it's, I mean, it's, it's just, I think it's important that you know that, that there's, not everybody is, is a hundred percent behind the large expenditures of money for a small benefit. I mean, it'll, it'll be a casual service to two or three hundred people and there could be three thousand people down there. And so.
And I think that's a really good point, Phil. And of course, um, the view of that lot may be too big, but it's recognition and what it's for.
Sure.
So thank you. Thank you.
Was your property for sale?
No, but I would have.
How would we have known about it?
If somebody would have picked up the phone and called because there's a flat space of property up here, I would have, I could have said to you, you know what? I could lease it to you for a dollar a year for, or I would have provided an easement on the, on the lot for you to put a cash location.
Quite frankly, we're, we're in negotiations right now with, with Roland Property, you have that property.
I talked to him the other day about the post office, so.
I'm sorry?
He, he mentioned it because he, I talked to him about the post office.
You talked to who?
Uh, Jerry Roll.
Okay. Jerry Roll?
Uh, um.
Randy.
Randy.
Okay.
No, it's Bowlin, isn't it? No, it's Jerry Randy.
It's Jerry.
Like, it's Jerry Randy, yeah, from Bowlin Property. Because I'm, I'm talking to him about the post office.
Oh, okay. All right.
So.
So, um, quite frankly, we're in negotiations right now.
Right.
We haven't made any commitment. We're just in the stages of talking. Now, did you have a proposal for us?
Yeah.
For that commit, for that man?
Well, I don't because obviously it wasn't important enough for you guys to look at. I mean.
Wait, you didn't tell the judges?
Excuse me. That's what they know about. You just said you're not attacking this committee.
I'm not.
And every time you do that, you are. So please reword that.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Just saying.
Obviously, this committee has an agenda. And the agenda is to spend city money to put, to put caches in place.
I totally agree. Just agree, Bill. We didn't know about your property.
How did we, we, how did we find out about a property that was not listed?
I told you.
Because, because someone on this committee thought, you know what? That would be a great property. And they went and looked at it in the, in the MLS.
Well, so can you share with us of what you found?
I own a piece of property.
Okay, but you mentioned a couple of lots, if I heard you right.
Well, yeah, there's, there's a lot behind the, the Four Winds Hotel. There's another lot about the three hundred block of, of Williams. It's just strange to me that all of a sudden we now have a, a lot that was not on the market. That somebody reached out to a guy to say, you know what, we, we're interested in this property and it's now on the city council agenda to spend. A hundred thousand dollars or eighty-five or ninety or whatever that number is gonna be to buy a piece of property that was never really even. On the market. And there's other properties that couldn't make it through.
Where, where's your property at?
We own the, the Wayland Hotel and there's this flat piece of property right above the hotel where there used to be a house. I approached the planner about putting a, a tiny home property up there. He said I couldn't do it because the zoning doesn't allow it. But it's a perfectly flat piece, piece of property that could suit that if we're gonna have to go through planning anyway.
So are, are you willing to share this information about your property with this committee?
I need to think about it.
All right, well, we would appreciate it because we, we don't wanna spend money unnecessarily but we didn't know that other properties.
All right.
This property seemed to be ideal to us.
All right, perfect, thank you.
We would appreciate it, thank you.
Um Karen?
Are you okay Joyce?
So.
Thank you.
Now that we're all composed again.
Oh, I'm not upset.
Okay, well you handle it much better than I do. While he attacks you, I can't.
No recordings.
I'm sorry?
Recordings back on. It just sounded like you were going.
Okay, so now, so what I did, I just said, I wanna figure out what we need to do with. What I have done here. I took the REBIE first protocol and I had numbered all the pages. Because I, I just couldn't leave the pages unnumbered. So I numbered all the pages. And then I read them and I read them protocol by protocol.
Right.
And I'm thinking, well, this doesn't make sense for us, well, this makes sense for us and I think we thought about that. So the first part here um is just, you know, it's just my thoughts about it, you know. Why we can use part seven, why we can't use part seven. So if you look at the communications protocol, it's on page seven of the original stuff that you got. And so I just um. It made suggestions on page seven, eight and so forth. What Derek recommended and what I think we should do. And I did this for all the protocols. I did it for communications, medical, more. Uh let's see, base camp layout. Evacuation management protocol, shelter protocol, temptation protocol, labor protocol, water protocol. Personal warrant protocol, food protocol, animal protocol and relocation protocol. So these are the protocols that they suggest. We don't need all of these protocols. We need to look at. The how, how we can um use this information but come up with our own protocol. And so my, my question is, okay, I've kinda like done some work on it. I'm not an editor, I'm not a writer. So I came up with the best that I could. So I think it's a good idea to do this to gear it towards Deep Bay so. I think it's excellent. Well, thank you. So to move forward. I thought, well, we can take one protocol at a time.
Yeah.
Um another is, another thought is we can. Have a, have a subcommittee, a couple of us um work on each protocol and get a chance for. Um the committee to do all the other stuff that we need to do. So what's the pressure of the committee? What would you want to see?
So what I would like to do is all of us at least do, do the first two together so that then if we do decide to break it off with the pairs to work on them on our own. Then at least we have a model of what we're working toward. If you handed me one right now, I wouldn't have had it.
Good.
So if we all work on a couple together and get the pattern down, the rhythm, then we can replicate that.
Good work.
Right, right.
Beautiful work Joyce.
Well, thank you.
I just was really impressed because I went through the notes and stuff and it also triggered some additional thoughts I had.
Well, that's good. I appreciate that very much.
You know, what the advantage of working with other people on it as well.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, I think that's a great idea that as a whole, maybe do one or two protocols and then see where we kind of at.
Okay. That's great. Do you, do you want to um whether the communications protocol?
Yeah.
You'll do that today or do this?
Because we just now got it.
Okay.
Soon we look at it.
Okay, well let's see, let's look at communications protocol.
Okay. So are we in this one or in this section?
So we're really in both, we're really in both. Um so if you look at this one here, it starts out with the REBIE first one. Well, it's, it's in, it's in here, part of the pages because it's in this one. Um yeah.
Okay.
So the communication pro, uh protocol, which I think is probably the most, really delta most important one that we have. So please start on page seven. So this is, um, this is what it looks like. Right, and then I'm sure.
Before we go to that.
Yeah.
Um I wanted to also make a suggestion um in the preliminary pages and I don't. The original one I have doesn't have patient first on it so.
I know, that, that's what I was saying. I went ahead, I went ahead and, and did patient numbers.
That was helpful.
It was too confusing.
And it's, it's a real simple thing. Uh one of the thing, and this will just take a moment because I think most of, that's a little more righteous. I think most of you don't agree with me. But uh one of the things that it recommends is that once everybody's there using the color tape. That whoever's in charge of like the base camp layout and then have the armbands. I'd say make the armbands ahead of them. Like we, we could, because we already, once we get our colors figured out so. We would already know that and just use elastic things and have them. One less thing in emergency for somebody to have to figure out what to do with duct tape.
So, so here's, here's, so also, let me, let me just before we start with this, let me just. These are overall general questions, okay? So um I'm not sure that we need duct tape for colors. I'm not, I'm not sure that we need. We're gonna be in a smaller area where we have stuff. I don't think it's bad to co- coordinate different things like bags and things like that. But I, 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 I had an experience about having armbands and. All this stuff. So if you have nine hundred people, which is what they're going to have, yes. But if we're gonna have fifty, hundred people, two hundred people, do we need that? Do we need coordinated armbands and?
It'd be nice to know that regular people showing up for help know who's in charge here.
Trying to identify the people that are actually right there.
Right. And so.
Right.
Yeah, and I think trying to minimize things that we, you know, don't need to do, I think it's good to look at that on those eyes. But in a chaos situation which is likely to be, we wanna make it like. Somebody walks into this and there's nobody that knows this, I think having the dots and it's, and I'm talking simple.
Yeah.
Armband, it's nothing elaborate but something just with the sticker on it or the color on it, maybe a few extra. That's one thing and the second thing I wanted to suggest which I mean I'm gonna suggest to uh Senate, Senate, right?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, um is that one of the early things it says to do is to get a, have somebody write down. People's names, where they're from, all that stuff is to provide pre-printed. Index cards.
For index.
With a little five, like a three by six one, the, the mini size one that are pre-printed with name, address, uh. Emergency contact if, you know, any um medical things, easy to file. They're already there and nobody has to be saying, well, what, what do I put on this?
Put this and then.
Self-identify.
And then when we have the mask, when we get together for the whole community, we can easily give those index cards to create one thing for the community if we need, you know. At least for the ones that are together and that'd be a simple thing.
Yeah, that's a really good idea Randy.
And, and building on that, so just um picturing what the, what Red Cross does on the site. So, so you do your intake, so your table, your intake table, that's what it kind of becomes where they then share that information, then they're writing it because there's. But then there becomes eligibility because we have an issue with the little baby yard and that and so there's that where we have to be sure. And then that intake table actually becomes your reunification table because we haven't gotten there yet. Communication is gonna be about that. A lot of people are gonna be showing up just to be looking for the ones they don't know where they are and so they're gonna be, that's what comes out of people's mouths. They, they're not thinking about their own water at that moment. They're wondering, have you heard, do you know, where can I find out about, I can't, I don't know where my daughter is, I don't know where my husband is. And so that same area of the state is actually a huge board that is that you can just put stick pens in, that people then can start using it to communicate outside.
So like having some blank cards and a board, bulletin board basically.
Saying looking for and then, and then I've got the, my long term plan is that people actually have pictures to be able to put on that board. And all of us have those on the calls, even we don't actually walk with a picture and that's a huge deal if you say, do you know where so and so is? We'd be able to have those kind of, that's two years down the road, I mean this committee, but then that's, that's.
That would be another thing, additional.
See how they walk up with what you did, how you were seeing that, you're seeing the pictures. You've got your intake person who's got whatever color they are and they're doing that. You've got your person that's handing out supplies, whatever color they are, but they're identified because everybody's chaotic and wounded. Looking for medical and you're trying to get them out and then you've actually given them a place where they can actually start communicating, looking and that's how. That's how those first six to eight hours actually.
Yeah.
And back to colors, can, whatever colors we decided to wear, not red, green, yellow or black.
Right, it can be those.
Those are, are, you know, the wounded.
Yeah, red.
Those, those are used by the, by the, by the fire department.
First responders.
Right. We want.
Part of the cert.
Right, right, and we wanna not.
It's red, green and yellow and not.
And black, right.
Green is like walking wounded and yellow is red and red is critical and black is dis.
Okay, right.
So I, because they don't use them actually, I'm thinking they would be a neon, neon color like neon orange or neon. And that would be what the city, what the city, what we would, we would have that, be ready to put that on because that's not because the. Fire department and cert don't use neon colors and so it would just be neon because of, or whatever, because that's not the way they go.
Right, thank you. So let me just come up with some, some general questions.
Yeah, 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 start.
Um so um we will have individual caches. Do we need all protocols? How many do you think you want? And can we add some together? So we don't need to decide this right now. These are just my questions after going through all this. I'm doing it an incident commander that the cache team leader reports to, radio call etc. Um will the incident commander be the only one with an O A N radio? That's part of what there's saying to do. Um do we need one team leader for, for cache or more with individual protocol responsibilities? So we have fifty people, do you need five commanders? You know, I don't know.
You know that, the book that's super, I recall, is there anything like that?
I don't think so. Do you think so? Uh um we ask for two satellite radios, one for both sides of the bridge, that's just an example of eyes. Um how will we secure the caches and will all have, who will have the combinations for the caches? Um will each cache have its own lock combination? So that's, that's in the future. Um we decreased down the suggestion, suggested supplies from here. Our one cache is in two, one cache we have is in two structures. Does this existing cache have the space for the supplies that we need? Instead of two small caches, a large one to help everything might be preferable. Uh do we have room in the current half cache for fifty gallon water barrel and last John, the Kathy said we do.
We do and waters are taken care of.
Okay. Um do we want color coded supplies? Do we need colored armbands? I'll simplify instructions and add images when, I think this is just face one.
We love it.
Doing. Um do we need three medical bags? Um how much duct tape do we need? I don't think we need to color code it, that's, we talked about that. Um especially if we want to decide evacuation point for helicopters. Uh can we do it at the apartment, what city home to, I don't know.
So I actually, I have helicopter information that we're all ready for. We don't do it now.
Okay.
Do you want to now?
Yeah.
Okay, so um we approached the Yew and Bay because we, because of our elevation and because we have a large, a large public sector. So Yew and Bay that was the fire district and so we have, so the helipad that they're planning on using and that we are marking off. They're writing in their protocol, the city is of the fire district and then um so they put the GPS coordinates down. We've got a wind socket goes up so that they can see what the wind direction is for helicopters to land. It fits the two different sizes of the helicopters. We're putting it into our protocol so nothing happens in that space. We don't use it for anything. It's dedicated to um what the helicopters will need. And we, so, and so we're writing that into our emergency plan which then I'm gonna give to the city so you can have that.
That's awesome.
So yeah, so we got, right, because the reason why we jumped on it like that is because it was really clear, there's no evacuation out of here. And so we were thinking if the only way out of here is gonna be by helicopter, then we need to figure out in advance where that is.
And more, and probably more realistically, it's more about drop off.
And it is, and that's actually what they were talking about.
And we get, we also work with the Coast Guard, I guess they did it about eight years ago, so we also have two sites.
For drop off from the lot.
For drop off and emergency.
That's great.
Pickup, but it's gonna be the smaller helicopter for the, the super critical, but that could be days, that could be weeks.
It's not gonna be a big evacuation helicopter. If they're gonna evacuate us, it's gonna be by boat.
That's exactly, yeah, and by then we'll be two, three weeks. The evacuation doesn't happen right away, it's two, three weeks into the event.
It is, there is some interesting questions for me though about this because. Little Wayal Co is a part of Deep Bay and so in my opinion, my opinion. Those two sites in Little Wayal Co are for Deep Bay.
Which is exactly what this is, yeah.
Um but it's.
That's how we.
It's an interesting question though because the, there's different HOAs have a different approach to things. Just like our facility in the Red Call has tremendous, uh you know, would be tremendous place for. Basically one of the, the assembly areas and it actually has, is dedicated as an assembly area. There's a lot of discussion and I don't know what the answer is, is, is that for Deep Bay or is that just for Little Wayal Co? Even though it's dedicated as a tsunami assembly area. I'm not sure how, I mean I know how I feel about it and I know. But I know there's a lot of people that concerned that, hey, this is HOA property, you, you know, da, 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 da.
And that's one reason why we, that's what we did when we started looking at the plan and what we're doing at the Yew and Bay. That's why when it came to designating as a helipad, we didn't, it's written in the.
Right, that's our, our.
It's written in the fire district code before, it's written in ours, so it's not ours. It becomes what they use and then we hand that over to the city so the city knows that's what they use. And then communication is really vital when it comes to all that as well, so.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, we're very excited. Yeah, as well.
Thank you.
So we've got basically the north and south.
We got it, either side of the bridge.
Either side of the bridge, yeah.
Right.
I, I, I can't imagine anybody in Little Wayal Co, should there be something, saying, this is ours.
Again, the beginning, it's really.
I can't imagine that happening.
The first, the first immediate emotional after an event is not where your life is. Because it, it is very much different, body stance is different. Now, two weeks in, when people are frustrated and. They've gone through loss because that's what it's all about, then people start, then they need to start thinking about it. You know, but those, what we talk about in this group is those first two weeks.
Yeah.
And then hopefully the cavalry's gonna start showing up and we're gonna start being able to do it. In those first two weeks. This community will pull together. There'll be these kind of bystanders who are gonna be like, hey, what do we need is, you know. Lot, lot of work like. But that's really exciting that we've got.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised that they had already worked that two coast guard and fire district and stuff.
So um here I'm almost over this. As well as supplies, Gina will be asked to add into the spreadsheet, will be a couple of the spreadsheet in each. And look at the first protocol on each cache. Um and so what type of event and Sheldon doing need? Uh we need at least one whiteboard and pens for each cache. Uh will one be sufficient for the different protocols we're working on? So these are just sort of like questions I have as I went through this. So if you look at um the protocol.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Especially the whiteboard.
Yeah.
Thing, if we might wanna consider adding a bulletin court board, bulletin board.
Yeah, something to start with, yeah, right.
Or we need to provide blue tape or somehow, if you're right, you've got it.
Putting their own stuff up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I wrote that down. So then if you, if you look at um. The communication protocol and if you look at what um I'm suggesting. Um it's, so if y'all don't mind, just look at page seven and eight, we can start with that and just see if you think I'm on track. Uh a cell, it was a cell, a communication protocol, you might.
I think you want to go over or pick up.
Yeah, look, look at their copy and then there's only three pages and, and had code copy. And so it's just three pages. They have them seven, eight and nine. And then if you don't mind, just want to see what I recommend.
So let me just kinda put this at the, the base, the base. So when we're talking about these events.
Mm-hmm.
So there's many times events that we have. We had the ice thing, they got all of us going on some certain things. So there could be that kind of event where we're mobilizing, there can be. So there can be that kind of event where we're mobilizing, there can be firework evac, and then some another. And then so, or levels of, at all the way up to the nine. And so when I look at what you've got here, um, I'm looking at where, um, that our islands have some ability to get to each other. And then a nine would be where our islands are only communicating by radio. And so when you talk about your communicate, so every island is gonna need to be able to reboot to this big plan. I see you have a big plan that would kind of be our city communication center, is that what I'm hearing you say? So.
I haven't said, I think it's called incident commander.
Okay, so you're gonna, so we'll do that, we'll write that up for, that's the assumption that our islands are able to get to each other. Certainly they're isolated and we're not driving anywhere, but people are like, like I get to Karen and I get over here to here, like I'm able to get here somehow by night. It takes me a little bit of time, but I'm not driving. But then there's also the event where you want your islands to be completely self-sufficient and able to. And so then in the caches you would want a, um, in the caches you would want a bin that just says, whatever we call it, communication in case kind of thing. And we would call it a level nine or whatever we call it. A level nine works because that's what they're saying, if it's a nine, uh, event, then that becomes the event, it's a nine or lower. So a level nine event, right, a level nine event means that you're, we're gonna need some bins that aren't necessarily gonna be accessed with every situation, but they're gonna be accessed in the level nine event, does that make sense at all?
It, it does, and, um, like I've said in here several times, all of our caches need to have some stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, whether, whether it's.
But not tons of everything.
No, just, just eleven, two hundred, two hundred people for, um, what is it, for two weeks or something like that, so. So some people may have, some caches may have thirty people, some may have two hundred.
Right, right.
We just don't know.
Right, exactly.
So if you look here, if you look at, um, what I'm suggesting for, um, if you compare, so these are the banks that I think that we need. So here's, you want, you have to put the duct tape back in. So I eliminated that because I wasn't really sure. So if you look here at the one that Pat told gave us, what do you see here and what have I suggested that you think we need to put back in depot bay's protocol? So no, no other radios probably just gonna be, I don't think we're gonna have those in each cache, that's probably just gonna be, have one radio, it's gonna be the incident commander.
Right. So, if I, if I, I might say, um, a lot of what you guys are talking about is a much higher level and the city will be doing it. So the city will be handling the incident commander of the emergency. So when you're thinking about this, you guys need to be thinking about it from the standpoint of each cache. You may have an incident commander at your cache. Um, you need to make sure that whoever is going to oversee that cache, which like you said, will be a REV first type thing. Um, I mean, they gotta have the radios, you gotta have the supplies, but we just need to just think about it from the standpoint of this is individual cache. You may want all caches to be the same and that's fine, but people kind of caches will not be running the emergency event.
Of course, so when you, right, and so when you said that, would you, so that's Michael, Dane and the E O C, that's the trailer.
They will be doing the communication, but city staff and the council will be running the emergency. And communicating with messages via radios, not just the radio.
And then you're, and city staff, so good, I'm really glad you clarified this for me. So when city staff does that, you've all gathered at the E O C or you've all done this from your homes, how is this, how does this look on that?
You'll see, the council and the city still needs to work on that.
So we don't know.
Yeah, so when you guys are planning on this, just focus on what you're gonna do with the caches and then when it's time and the city does sit, work with the council, then we give you that the dots. So we that, we can say, okay, right, so okay, you know, notify the caches, but then talk to the, find out who the cache is and the commander is. Find out where this database is and get reports that way.
So who on the council is, is putting together the, the communication piece? Okay, so I. So I, how, who do we approach for that? Because one of the comments he made was that, um, was that the coordination of all of the efforts, I guess. And so I guess that, I thought that was the function of this committee, was to be sure that that communication piece was happening. I was totally.
It, it isn't because you guys are not gonna run a disaster, no, that's not your role.
I'm asking, I'm asking who is in charge of the communication?
It's gonna be me and Brady with the council will be running the disaster as far as who's doing the work. We tried to do a work session, didn't come out exactly the way that we needed it to be, we still need to have that engagement. Although I think that engagement, we've got some basic protocols from the previous, um, okay, what's it called? The previous gag, not also their emergency operations, but we got some basics that we could use that, okay, was from, we did that. But it's gonna be connecting the dots that we need to.
So, so are you and Brady then working with, with Michael, like working with Dane, because it's the P D E O.
Dane has their protocols, we're gonna wanna do whatever, so it's like, significant is connecting all the dots.
Right.
Connecting the cache dots, connect to the communications. Emergency operations communication center will be the primary resource because they'll be relaying information from emergency, you know, San, Lincoln County. Um, the cities, how are we gonna get information? They have their own protocols all ready.
Right.
So what I need to verify with Brady, because he's done this before, is how we connect the city to his emergency, Dane's emergency operations, and then make sure the caches. What you're gonna need to do is make sure that Dane knows who to contact. Or the incident commander knows how to get ahold of Dane to say, hey, we're here at cache, whatever, whatever. Um, Stone Bridge cache, we're here at Stone Bridge cache and I'm the incident commander, if you need anything, give me a rain, here's my channel, or whatever. So there's a lot of those pieces that it's gonna take a while to do.
So basically the city is the hub, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
And where, but we may be leapfrogging, this will have to relay, because somebody right over here, isn't gonna be able to reach over here.
That's where I think it would be important that each cache A has a symbol and, and numbers are usually easiest. And everything in there is identified, so somebody says, well, what cache A, nine. And then Michael Dane would have the map and say that cache is okay.
Exactly.
Now who's the current incident commander, okay, this. And that way, again, in the REV first section, that's one of the first things to do is basically.
It should be.
Try and connect the emergency operations. We just have to keep in mind that there's kind of a two-pronged thing. And that is that this is all dependent on whether or not staff in the emergency communication trailer are available. Um, because of whatever. So for that time period before that, or in lieu of that, the caches need to be kind of primary. But it's kind of like, then while depot bay's city is managing the, the incident, the county is also managing, you know, there's a hierarchy that just goes up. And that's, this is all good, but the understanding is that we wanna work with what's working and available to us. And we wanna understand that, you know, if, if and when the depot bay gets up and running and the caches go to them, they will then go to the, the county and FEMA and such. But at any given time, that link could be broken, so we at least need to know. That's why it's important, like in Little Well Cove, you know, we're asking not only how to communicate with, with Michael Dane and that here, but what if they're not available, what are the other protocols?
Yeah, we ask the same question, so, right, that's what we're comparing.
But we have to do kind of a dual, a dual thing, because the reality is.
Right, and then what I'd like to do is include coverage in that, because in that process, and then we actually have a triangle with the, we broke everybody that's in the point, and we sure that.
So what we're, what I'm trying to do today is just to determine what's gonna go on our cache, but in REV first, you know? And I think that this communication, we could probably spend another month trying to figure all this out.
Right.
But, uh, some of the information. So with, um, like on page, their page eight.
Right.
And our page, well, I don't, I don't remember it. Um, we're talking about, um, once again, gathering information about it actively. And so Randy came up with the idea of pre-printed cards, index cards.
One question, like, Danny, this is one question people don't know.
Just have them in that, in that communication and, and every cache, exactly. I'd also wanna say that when you talk about timing and the, and when we, when they all get to where they need to be, so. So staff is, is mobilizing and Brady can, and they're all mobilizing, and what Michael said to us and what Captain Dan said to us from the, because we asked that, because it's this very same question, and they said, you need to suspend the first hour, maybe two, evaluating, assessing your area, gathering concise data and then broadcast no sooner than an hour after. And know that it could be two hours, because the waves are gonna be crazy with the chaos. And then with, then when you, when a cache site does give there, does communicate, they are able to say, okay, we have so many survivors here, we have plenty of it. And then that way, Kim, Brady and Michael can take that information and run with it.
Right.
That we're, it's not like, so each cache needs to be able to know, because everybody's gonna be like, oh, you know, this is scary. It's a very scary thing, so let's just manage that moment, gathering the data. It's not trying to reach Kim and Brady and Michael right away.
Not right away.
Not right away, which gives us the time to then gather our data, which we need to determine what it is we want to say to them right away. How many, what are injured is, what level is that, how many non-survivors we have. And then, then they can start thinking about coordinating aid, but it's those, each cache needs to be ready to manage themselves.
Yeah, and so, what?
One of the things to keep in mind too is that I appreciate you saying, do we need all the, that person in charge of each protocol? One of the things in Red Cross, in SERD, is that the more you can give people tasks to do.
Exactly right, yeah.
The more call, the more they feel in control of it, or without control.
That's right, that's exactly right.
And so it's a kind of a.
Right.
You know, too, too silent.
So your, so your, 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 um, bandit person isn't necessarily at the table, you've identified somebody that's could be beneficial to you so you don't have to be two places at once. And they can sit here and you tell them and they can follow through with that, then you can ident, you know, identify a relief for that person. And now that's giving you the ability to be more, you call yourself as much as you can, so that, and giving everybody a job.
Giving them something to do, especially if you can do.
Right, right, exactly, right, exactly.
And so along those same lines, uh, so this is, uh, basically stuff I got out of this book. Where it's like ten count names, age, where they're from, the home conditions.
Right.
Um, and what have you, and is there anything else that we need other than what is listed?
Emergency complex.
Okay.
And people, you know, hopefully will be thinking beyond just my neighbor. But, and some might not have it, but at least we have some.
So if you actually identify that, if we're gonna write it on a card, you say emergency contact.
That's right, yeah.
Outside of area.
Outside of area.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And some might not have it and they don't have to fill it in, if you do, it's just.
That's not, right, but the point is, right, exactly right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and so, Dan, if you look at, um, so then there was nothing in here about basic radio communications. Um, so I just went online and just printed something which I think would be helpful to have in the cache. Uh, this would be of course with our G M R S radios. But it gives you what to say, um, you know, think about your action, what, what you say, and I think you've done that. Uh, different languages, um, either radio itself and some, they also have something about, um, and is, um, alpha, um.
Different than it often.
Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo, Oscar.
Yeah, so that's.
Golf.
I think I have.
Hotel, India, yeah.
And, and I think this is, is, is good and should be in the book, but in addition, um, I'll see if I can find it. In Little Well Cove, we have a front and back, kind of a little, a squire.
Yeah, we'll.
So that it would be in with the radios.
Okay.
You don't want.
To have to read all this.
What you guys wanna do is your protocols need to be the quick and dirty of what they need to do. All of this other stuff, how to talk on the radio, that is conciliar, meaning that you can provide it, but it shouldn't be part of your P D I. Because you're not gonna take the time or an urgency to teach someone how to speak this little language. So, you know, um, that's one of those things, you know, if you're gonna have a communications team, you maybe that's one of those things you can have them do more, you guys are all doing something else. But anything extra you pro, provide on these specific activities, his idea is good, just still move cards, you know, flip side cards, you know? Make it easy for them to do it, settle all in detail, bullet points.
Yes.
Quick and dirty on how to do things. So I can help with that, because that's what I do and I'm more willing to do that. Um, you guys provide, you know, content and, but we need to, these little extra things are great, we just need to put them in a separate.
Well, that, that's great.
Focus on what you want someone to do immediately.
Well, that, that's great, because like I said, this is just the first draft of everything, so.
So this is not gonna be a quick thing to do, I'm sure it took them a long time to work this together.
Oh, absolutely, can I add, since we've identified that we want to give, so to, let's put, I'm not sure where to put that, where the, um, um, so, uh, two hours post unlocking cache, attempt radio communication. I mean, give them that guideline, that then, okay, so in two hours, okay, in two hours, we're gonna try and reach the city. And then that way the city knows.
Yes, give them a checklist.
Right, right, right.
This is what we want you to do.
Right, two hours, that's when we try the radio, until then, get, put the radio in your hand and see how to use it.
Step one, REV.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly, right, right, and then, but then post.
Take two hours to find this, this, this.
And then it would be, what time did you open this, what time did you open this bin? Two hours from that time is when you reach out to the city.
Okay.
And then that, having that detailed then keeps, the city knows what to expect and then it keeps, because the waves are gonna be full of every G M R S radio out here that is a connected to a cache.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, so basically, um, what I picked up on this is, you like the duct tape?
Yeah.
You like the color coding? And, and so we, instead of having three pages like they have here, and I had more than three pages, just have a menu one page.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, 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 that's excellent, okay.
And then these pages are gonna be, um.
One minute?
Yeah, thanks.
Well, this is a little scary, Randy, you're gonna start getting in my head, you know?
You know, yeah.
It's not, it's not.
I was wondering what was going on.
It's not pretty.
So communications, um, so basically we can learn what they've given us, we want some of my business maybe and have quick and dirty.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Perfect, all righty.
And then that feels, that feels very doable, with Kim's input about.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
As we develop, the, we, we are at the point of developing for our communication center for our little, probably in Little Well Cove. Um, we are anticipating that there won't be anybody with experience running the op, the radios, we're gonna have. And we're gonna have what would be a sheet this size, on poster size, step one, turn on radio with a picture.
Perfect.
Step two, say this, step three, do this, step four, don't say anything.
I agree with you, generate that.
Let go of the button.
Right, yeah.
Once we get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, definitely, we don't have that done yet, but we plan to have our communication center, if it's standing, um, with, nobody knows anything about radios, so. A, a poster, step one, two, three, four, where to turn it on with the picture.
Sure, that's, that's good, right.
And, and all that in real, as brief as you can get it.
Yeah.
You know? And not be happy.
That'd be fantastic.
But that's a work in progress.
That's great. So if you look, um, here's some, you know, I, I want to look at supplies for, um, communication. It's off our this document and we, we've been going over supply needs for years now. And so, um, if you look at, I don't know if you have it yet, but supplies for communications, handheld radios, and this is. And this is part of what they're sent as well for communications, what you say.
Yeah.
GR, GR, it looks like this.
GR in this.
Looks like that, I think it's part of the big, big thing.
Oh, is it?
Something like that.
I think so.
Is it in this one or the other?
No, anyway.
Is it?
What are you, what are you talking about, Torres?
Like the city handheld radios, the number one radio storage, flipboard, trinkets, double batteries.
Yeah, just on that, okay.
Um, and I, I'm just, like, the NOAA, whether radio is just a receiver.
Right, right.
Just on those little versions receivers.
Right.
But I, what is the difference between, and, and I'm just asking, this, a city handheld radio and a two-way radio?
I'm not sure. I can't.
We'll make sure you get the right radios in there, just tell someone.
I mean, I can't imagine there being, in need for Duke podcasts.
Ours doesn't look like.
I think it's the same thing in our. Now, remember, this is from the.
So, um.
Well, there's, yeah, so we need to come up with what we want in ours. And I thought we had done that, so I need to actually, I think I want to probably engage maybe, um, uh,
Michael.
Michael or Fire or somebody because I kept getting very.
Different answers.
Frustrating answers, which is why we ended up with a bunch of radios we didn't need. So I'm going to find out the exact radios, just like I'm going to find out the satellite radios, so.
Okay. So here's just some.
And that might be the option of having a satellite radio depending on how many caches we have. Depending on what radios we go with.
Yeah.
As the option because that will serve a lot of purposes, including allowing everybody to keep communicating. So, um, we know which, yeah, I don't think there's any difference between the city handheld. There shouldn't be any difference. You don't want to have a lot of radios. We're just going to give you one radio. That's going to allow you to communicate everybody you need to. And it might very well end up at least one cache having a satellite radio.
Okay.
Because you're going to communicate with everybody. I think with these grants that are out there.
They can't, they can't, the satellite doesn't communicate local, the satellite communicates the other side of the disaster. The satellite isn't for me to talk to in Little Well Cove. The satellite is for me to talk outside of.
Yeah, the satellites to reach your, your, your child.
From what I understand, satellites can act just like phones.
Yeah.
Anyway, local and distance, but I'll check it out.
Well, I know that my niece in Mahuna could reach her brother in Texas and brother in California.
Right.
So it allows her to get out because she didn't have to deal with looking for any van, cell towers. But that shouldn't have been, as far as I understand it, she couldn't have communicated on the other side of.
You would come, you would be able to communicate locally with somebody else with a satellite.
Satellite phone.
That's what I was going to say.
They have to be.
I will do some more research on that.
Because if, I mean, because if the mobile tower's down, the receipt, whoever has their cell phone's not going to work. So they would have to have a satellite or a satellite radio, which there's two different things.
Or a satellite radio, that's exactly.
Yes, satellite radio or satellite phone, got it, yes, yeah.
And in one sense, if there was a grant available, it'd be nice to have one on each side, north, south.
Yes.
Well, we're saying both sides of the bridge, you know?
Right, yes.
So I came up with supplies for each protocol, I don't think you got a copy of it, so we can just skip that and.
Okay.
And, and do that next time. So as far as communications protocol, quick and dirty, one page laminated. It's, they don't have to have correct grammar if you're trying to talk about E-Radio or anything like that. So that's good. So you would try medical protocol or.
Sure.
Medical protocol.
Just before we, for communication, I just, as someone who has some radio experience.
Yeah.
Of, one thing to be clear for folks is many people are using GRMS radios illegally.
Oh.
And all that kind of stuff. Many of the radios we have are not, which not legal use as is. And it's important for people to know that in normal situations. But anytime there is an emergency, nobody needs a license. No, so you don't have to say, anybody have a ham radio license? If it's an emergency, nobody has to have a license. The station doesn't have to have a license. It's, if it's an emergency. But just be aware that this is an issue that came up in Little Well Cove as everybody was getting these radios. And then it's like, you know, you could get fined and there were some places that did, nobody. Because even during radio checks, it's not an emergency. So are you using a GRMS frequency or are you? So the important thing for me is to, for people to know, you know, it is good if you can get a radio, especially for you just even just to listen. But in an emergency, you can talk, you can communicate without risk of it being any communicate. You can talk out of it.
So prior to you joining the committee, so everybody got FCC license?
A GRMS?
We all did, right, for GRMS. So we, just for that reason, just because we want to be sure that, that we weren't.
Right.
Pawning up the lines with something that was, so, so we, it sounds like you already have FCC license.
Yeah, many of us in Little Well Cove do.
Right, right, so that, right.
Safety cadence.
Right, well, we, we did do that, we thought that was necessary.
So that's right. Did that, is that where you were headed with that?
Well, what I was headed for is there's people, the radio people.
You're talking about hammered people?
Oftentimes are like, you can't use it, you shouldn't be using it and stuff like that.
That's right.
And you should learn how to use it. You can listen no matter what.
Right.
But if in a real emergency, use it. You're not going to be arrested.
Well, the first time we did a radio check and when Donna White were doing radio checks, we've been out of town this summer.
Yeah.
I remember, I, I got on the phone, I went, hello, this is Joyce. On Anchor Avenue and whatnot. And so then Deb talked next and she's like, yeah, yeah, yeah. And went, oh. It was so funny. And it goes, well, this truck ran her and.
It was really funny. So Michael Dane, he said to you, so Saturday at 11 o'clock, he would love that we all keep doing radio checks. So every Saturday 11 o'clock, he would love for us all to chime in.
Every Saturday?
Yeah, every Saturday 11 o'clock. He also liked to do Saturdays and Wednesdays, but he hasn't expanded that because he liked to do Wednesday evenings at seven. Because then that way, everybody's practiced in the daytime and everybody's practiced in the evening. And so, but right now, he's hoping that we all go on Saturday's live, which is what he told us initially. Channel seven, which is the channel that the city has, has kind of squatted on. And then with the idea, once we get good at that, then he would expand it twice.
That's good.
Right, and so.
We've got it in that, yeah. So we, we were pretty good at it for a while, but we had radios that quite frankly weren't. Our antennas weren't here each other. And so then that's when we got on, got the GR, GMRS radios. And we were pretty good for that.
The Baufon sound a bit better.
A little bit, yeah.
A little, there's still terrain issues.
They still are, very much, but then we got to let it extend it. And so the, so we're putting out a repeater, Michael's, we're, we're putting repeater up at the top of, of the hill over here near the bay. So that in the hopes that we're going to be able to get over.
But we can't allow the GRMS people trying to use the repeater or the repeater.
No, that's exactly, but just for you to know, if he didn't tell you that, that's what.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of it, trying not to be too.
Too vocal about it.
Because the repeaters are very, you have to have a particular invite and.
That's right.
An address or.
And so they're setting that.
A repeater literally repeats the signal at a higher frequency and sends it out. So it allows you to reach further, so you're not communicating from here to here. You're communicating here to the repeater and then the repeater's sending it to you so you could double your distance.
Double your distance.
But this repeater doesn't have unlimited.
Right, right, it's not, right, it's not, it's not, you're, right, exactly. So anyway.
Okay, so if we go, no, this is all the information. I'm, I'm happy everyone has a passion about what we're trying to do. So medical protocol, I remember the pages 10, 11, well, 13, 14, and 15 and 16.
So if they have a protocol, we're thinking, this is those first, those first, that's those first days going into the two weeks possible. And then what you could only need to reach for immediately. So one of the things you could do is amongst your survivors standing there trying to put people to work, say, anybody a nurse, anybody an AMT, would you please come up and join me here for this minute? And then you're going to identify, anybody that's any CERT training, anybody that's any medical training. Now you've got that, five people out of two.
All of this stuff that she's saying is your checklist.
Is your checklist.
That's what should be written down. This tells you what kind of things to bring. She's telling you the checklist.
That's good, that's, and then that, then they do that. And then you've got those people and now you can, now you've increased, you cloned you. And now they're all going out and then they're checking on you because your medical needs are all gathered in place. See if they can't. I mean, really bad ones that can are like being drug up over here. I mean, that's, and so now you've separated. And now nothing you can use for, somebody who's not necessarily medical, but it's calm and seems like they got together. She don't believe somebody, somebody who's identified as their coherent with their radio. Then you would put somebody with that. And that person could be that person. And they feel like they're doing something and then you have to walk away from something.
Something's in control.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's yours. Is that what you're thinking, Kim, that you're going, yeah?
So and once again, we're probably going to need like one laminated sheet for all of this stuff.
That's right.
I've tried to, I've tried to whittle it down.
Right.
As far as what we're going to need. What, and I'm just going by different supplies that they're saying, I'm trying to whittle it down. But I think that we would probably need for the number of people that we're looking at versus 900 people. I don't, and then that supply information that I came up with, y'all don't have it, so we'll have to look at that. When we get it, we'll compare the two. But they have like three different types of bags. So if we put those in our caches.
They have cache supplies things in here.
They, they don't have it.
Where? Pages 32 through of, of this packet, 32 through 36.
Oh, yeah, it's back here, back here, back here.
I didn't see it in here.
No, no, this is where we got handed today.
Today. 32 through 36. I was like, I know we put everything in there, then she made me.
Well, good.
Not her sheet.
Yeah, that's where trigger.
They'll see packet.
Okay.
So it's, this one of the page numbers on the bottom.
So let's look at supplies. So if you, if, if you are in your cache, is, are these the types of supplies that we need? If you just kind of gather, and, and I think, I like the idea of the duct tape and all that, we can add that back.
And try to be realistic. I know the CERT packs.
Right.
Are really helpful, but they have nine of them, if we have nine caches, that's a lot. You definitely want to have a minimum of one on the north side, one on the south side of the bridge.
I don't think we need nine caches, but I think we should probably have about six maybe. Well, I think, I think, I think we just keep adding them until we don't, until we're right.
So listen, I don't think that's the way to do it. I'm sorry.
We have nine in the fire district currently without anything we've done there.
That's great. So I actually asked Gina to do some research for me because I don't have the same concerns Bill does, except that I do have concerns about us packing the city with caches. I don't think it should be the city's responsibility to feed, serve 3,000 residents. I think that we should be strategic and make sure we have the right caches and the right supplies in the right place. But that being said, I asked Gina to do some research to find out how many caches other cities are putting in that are our size. Fortunately, she's sick today, so I will have to provide that information. She will give a report to you at the next meeting. Because I think that other cities, you know, depending on their size, they're getting what they feel would be, what do we need for two weeks ready? Are we two weeks ready for 3,000 people? Are we two weeks ready for 15? Are we two weeks ready for 5,000? We got to focus on what we think we need and need to serve. And it cannot be everybody in the city, it just cannot be.
We don't really hold this on making people be responsible for their health.
I agree with Bill that that is the most important thing we should be doing.
Yeah.
With, with the vision, I, there's the little caveat that I keep trying to add to that in that we need to be prepared to take care of ourselves so that we can also take care of others. Because if our house is damaged or our supplies are damaged, we want that, you know, it, it's going to be a broader need. And so part of the thing with the caches, and I agree, I don't think we want too many. But part of the idea isn't so much, we need them for 3,000 people as much as. We need them at the primary islands that we're going to have. And I don't, I don't remember.
That's exactly why we won one by the postal.
Right.
Right.
And what was, I don't remember what the number of islands were in our area. I want to think there were six they identified.
Well, there's like, there's like four quadrants and islands within the quadrants.
Let me split it up that way.
Yeah, it's going to be diversified.
So I think they identified it six.
I would say there were six, six or seven.
There were kind of.
I originally saw a number of six to eight caches.
Yeah, I don't think.
I think eight's a little on the high side, but I don't.
I think probably six is.
I think six feels reasonable, but that's not counting what the HOA said. Okay?
The HOA's are, right, the HOA's are trying to take care, right.
Of the HOAs.
Yeah, right.
But not.
Right, right, but not, again, that, because that's what he's bringing up as well. So that's why, I'm tired of stepping on your stance. So, so that's why, because we, we, we presented a cache site and it was, wasn't considered acceptable. It was cost too much to get it ready. But when I took back to the HOA, that we're looking at the seaside program and having it called here, Friends in My Places, which you were talking about, the Roxy thing. That to me, because when you talk about, okay, so we're getting ready, so Little Well Cove is ready. And boy, it's great that we have three of these barrels from the city that are going to supplement because there are 200 non-residents that have found their way to us for these two weeks. That's how we are picturing.
Yeah.
Because we're on the evac site, on the evac meeting. So we're picturing people riding up, taking a left, heading up the hill. Here we go, we're ready to go. We've all got our own personal supplies. We don't have a community cache yet because we don't have a place for it, but we're working on it. But wouldn't it be great if those first few days, we had some of those barrels that some of us offered to keep, Friends in My Places? And now we can manage the numbers.
Right.
And, and now we're communicating two hours later, letting them know, okay, we've got so many residents, we've got three non-residents up here, but six million, and those numbers.
And then we can assess, is, you know, do, does they have access to, I don't know, number three cap?
Exactly right now.
You know, is there access?
Who has access, right, exactly. And I know we can communicate with storage because they have a city, they'll have a city cache. And so they're like, so what are we back? How many non-residents do you have?
Well, I haven't heard. They're both on the Community Renewal Energy Grant and our grant that we've like, or if there's a delay because of the wildfires. Now, when the rains start, I want you to have a delay then.
Because of the flood.
Like. Well, I'm like, y'all aren't even involved in this.
And we started their cache was because we thought, everybody's been running up the hill.
Everybody's been running up the hill.
And. Oh, I think that's exactly what people get though.
And, and yes, we are encouraging every, all the homeowners, just save your own stuff, stock all your own stuff. Right. Don't look to the cash. Don't look to the city, right, don't look to the storage, right.
And if you're prepared, Ian and I are prepared, and one of our houses is destroyed.
Then we help each other.
Then we're helping each other. It isn't just for me, that's the part that.
Right.
But yet we can and should be prepared for ourselves. But yet we can and should be prepared for ourselves, but we want to also move beyond that that it's also for the benefit of others, which will come around to you if it's your turn to be on the bad side of things.
So Wendy, what we're what we're thinking of doing is not only having the caches, but having our neighborhoods communicate with each other. Getting people, like where I live, I live off Anchor Avenue, and then there's what is like, um, there's um Winchell. Kathy lives in the area, I live in the area, Brady lives in the area, and Karen's a little bit further east than us. Is to get areas, define areas and and have meetings and say, okay, who has a big enough garage to have a fifty-dollar empty barrel? We need to know our neighbors, who has medical experience with carpenters, electrician? And get to know our neighbors, so that's that's what we're looking at, you know, primarily, not just the caches.
Right, yeah.
But you know, they.
Which again is, the HOAs kind of have a built-in network that we've kind of been working at that, and that's a great idea, I think.
Let's go back to the
Cam.
To your. Cache supplies, because we have two bags, don't we? In the communications tractors of um that Brady has secured for us and is supposed to serve like a hundred people. And it's got everything in it.
And what is it technically?
It's an emergency preparedness bag, it's it's got all these supplies, like medical.
For emergency operations communications that are not for the caches.
No, but yeah, but we, that's what we can look into, it's just one bag that has all of this in there because this is too onerous to put all this together.
I mean, so that's that's what was part of my question here, I'm going like, who are we gonna put all this stuff, you don't need this stuff.
No, no, we get these one, and they're they're large bags and you can get them for five hundred people, but Brady was one that was able to secure the one for the communications.
Well, that would be so much better.
And I think that would be more ideal for the caches than to try and do with each and eight, nine bags, so.
So so do you know where we got them?
No, but I'll find out from Brady.
If there's already bags that exist or if there's if they're running, I think it's okay, but just getting cotton balls and
Yeah.
all paper clips and then.
These are fully stocked and they've got surgical things in them and all kinds of things, so.
Okay, well then we, why don't you, why don't you ask Kim and we don't really need to go and.
Yeah, I'm looking at one right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they're.
How pricey are they?
Um, this one is like a trauma medical one.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we have.
This medical one is um eight hundred twenty-eight dollars ninety-nine cents.
Yes.
But can we afford to do that number of cash?
We have to. We have to afford it.
You can't do it all in one year.
So are they like big duffel bags like this?
Yeah.
Oh, it looks like a, uh, do you ever see those? Now, Wendy, this is just a bleeding, this is not food, this is just medicine.
No, just, no, medical.
Like a big first aid kit.
Uh, yeah, it's uh pretty big, I mean, it's looks like a
Yeah, but yeah.
I mean, it's got everything right there, drawers you pull out, I mean, it's right handy.
Yeah. Which side do you want?
I might um emergency kit, so I'll come on.
It 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 would be worth, I I haven't started the program yet, I'm gonna go through the CERT program, but I'm pretty sure, did you use, are you CERT?
I guess we associate.
Are aren't there CERT bags that are literally this and it's available for a region, for a for an area? Because like I know the HOA in the the Buels, Buellview in Newport, they have the three CERT bags in their rec center which are basically medical and I think other emergency and they're through a CERT like
Mine is there.
warehouse.
Everything from flashlights to batteries, bandages.
To the marketing.
Just around you there.
So I think when you know.
Oh, yeah, they got just out of company.
All self-contained backpacks.
So I'm just saying that they may definitely be a.
They have a, they they have a, right, you can buy from that, so what, so you're aware to say, so the CERT, Lincoln, Lincoln City CERT is the is the G O, is the plenty fire station there, so they have a closet and it has those things, when you get started, you don't get that. You get a backpack that is much more real.
Right, right, I'm talking about.
But it gives you, but you're aware that you have, I would say access, anybody can buy them, I'm sure, but yeah, there is a
But I was just wondering, in terms of having to go through every little thing to identify, I would think CERT.
Oh, I know, but it drove me crazy, you know, going through years, we're all gonna need this.
Right.
This one's very expensive, this is for two hundred and fifty, it's like an Office Pro Emergency Kit for two hundred and fifty employees. It comes in like a, looks like a yellow trash can.
Yeah.
Um, it has food, water, light sticks, hands, flashlights, megaphones.
Or just wanting to register say medicals, is there, is there a?
The medical is, yeah, that's easy, but this they only want um ten thousand for.
So is there, so is there a um, is there a medical person on the city staff? Like, do you have a consult person like that? So what we did at here today, so we have eight medical people in the community, so we had them get together, they put together this, and then it comes seventeen, seventeen hundred fifty bucks. So I'm buying that and putting it in a thing and that's gonna be what we have of the.
We have a.
We can easily find this.
Yeah, that's what we have. But I but I used a medical for, because I don't know, I, when I look at this, I can tell you one thing I'm really glad is on our list is um is the is the splints, yeah, because I didn't know from splints, boy, these stamped splints, a break, I mean, you can splint anything, I mean, I can splint.
I would say maybe not depth, but anyway, but there is, there's some really cool stuff out there now, now we do that.
So we actually put ours together and it costs us seventeen hundred bucks. So let's let's let's.
And if we wanted to add anything, it was gonna be more.
So we we can agree that um that there's really no sense in comparing supplies at this point
Right.
because now we're gonna look at the bags and see if that just.
Right, just do, and then I would find a bag that she felt like was appropriate and then just.
But I I would I would vote for that, that would be terrific.
Right, right.
So then, uh, so as far as the medical protocol, um, as far as what to do and not necessarily supplies. Um, I think once again, we need to tone tone this down to a quick and dirty one or two pages.
Yeah.
Something like that. Um, I am asking for help from someone on the committee to help me with this, I belong here. The dirty page person, quick and dirty. I'm I'm just saying in general, um, because what we're talking about doing a um a quick and dirty for communications, like laminator page and one or two for medical, um, and to take out a lot of the stuff and just make it very easy and just send like a checklist, or like a template, absolutely.
Well, I can help with the formatting once you guys get the content, because right now we don't have specific sets, like for example, I think Deb should volunteer to do the medical one. Grabbing all the stuff right there. And all she would have to do is throw them over, document, send it to me, and I would make it pretty easy to check.
So who did she send to?
Yeah, she's already volunteered, so.
Okay.
Well, it's.
So what is it that you want, what I just said about.
Oh, yeah, I think you know, what you're saying, what somebody would do, so somebody takes the first thing, somebody takes medical, what Deb is doing and says, okay, she knows from experience, when somebody gets blood, the first thing they need to do.
Deb, would you mind working with me in a communication, if the medical will just get together, so and then maybe I could work with Randy on another one or.
So so what I would ask the committee to look at, go together, so we um, we stepped away from the tagging in our, the color tagging in our HOA. Um, when we were thinking about medical emergency and just because we, unless we have a lot of non-residents, it felt to be black tagging anybody or, you know what I'm saying, if in the paper, but so what we decided instead of tagging up there is that we were gonna have tarts and that we were gonna have this tarp is our immediate and this tarp is our, but that's one because we all know each other up there, but in a cash situation, do you want to have, since I'm writing this medical thing up, do you want to have the person tagged, so what I'm talking about is we walk up on a person, you're identifying whether they deceased, do they, are they not able to breathe? Do they just do any of this flint, now you're labeling them green, black, red, and yellow, so do we want, I'm asking, do we want in the caches somebody labeling the people?
I, you know, I don't know.
As cruel as it sounds, I think it's the most reasonable thing to do.
It is, if you don't know people.
Because. Well, yes and no, because if the first thing that we want to report in two hours
That's exactly right.
is we have three green, two black, one red, and five yellow.
That's exactly right. Okay, and so then that does take the onus off of off of our cash people. That's just. That's just running it so that they can just.
Because you're gonna have somebody going through, do this initial triage, and somebody else come along and
Right, right. Right.
And need to go to the red people first before you go to the green people.
Right.
Yeah.
So what we decided as a neighborhood.
But you didn't even have tarts with the colors.
Yeah, but we decided as a neighborhood, because we were just gonna move them to different areas, we wanted to have them obviously labeled off just because it felt amongst the medical personnel where I am, that, but it didn't feel that big, we didn't know that that you would want to, so 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 I would say one of the supplies you need in your medical, besides having um, besides having the bag that we're gonna find that means these that needs and is the right money, you're gonna want these tags.
I I think.
Even just the stuff like they use to mark, you know, staging things, that just that.
No, they're actually, they're a thing you buy.
The rhythms.
They're a thing you buy because they actually have on it.
Where you can write.
They're up and right, because if you turn it, it's a thing you put in times on them. Like if there's a thing you, that those treatments they've had, then it lets you know that, oh, they, she can't turn it, it's longer than so many hours, you can't. So they're actually, it's not just duct tape that is.
No, not duct tape, it's, you know, you tie it, but I thought initially that somebody comes along.
Yeah. They just do it that way and it's.
You're talking about.
There's a thing on it, that's fine, that works for me, I just am saying, I think in these individual cache and the thing, in as they pull out their medical, somebody's tagging off this green, black, red, yellow.
Sadly, I think, because if you multiply then that guy's six caches and someone is trying to coordinate rescue and priorities.
Yeah, right, it'd be a lot easier.
They've got to. But yes, it's not gonna be an easy thing to do.
It's not an easy thing, yeah.
And that's probably one of the hardest things that people don't want to really deal with, is having more protocol or ashtray body bags.
Right. We should, right.
But the last thing in emergencies, which like you probably have experienced as well, is not to know what to do with, like God forbid, the dead bodies.
And so that's a challenge everybody else, so are there body bags on it on this list?
Yeah, perfect, yeah.
Because that's absolutely, it was, it was really hard for me to get it in my, in my skin, step up, up and nail. It was, the medical people were just saying, oh, no, we just don't even start thinking that way. We have to, yeah, because if you don't start backing it up, then we're gonna have a huge issue.
You're gonna have a much bigger issue.
Well, can can and here, it um, part of their information is that most of the damage to people is going to be from the earthquake and.
Yeah, right.
And so and it's gonna be pretty quickly, we're gonna be very determined, you know.
You gotta do that, you know, you're gonna have a discipline in the area.
Sure, we gotta really long. Are we gonna finish our meeting?
Yeah, I think so, um, so Deb and I will figure out a program to do that. The only other thing I have is, um, I I want y'all to determine what to do about um two weeks ready. I I've listened to a couple of meetings, there's some cities that are very much advanced. We haven't advanced very much here because of everything else we've had going on, we've been out of town, we've had handy visiting, we just moved the busy summer, I think it's a good program, uh, Kim is the coordinator.
Okay, so I want to stress that Kim's the two weeks ready coordinator, that's what I thought.
I've been attending everything, so.
That's good, that's great.
And they they give, she she has monthly meetings too.
That's great, that's good.
So is this a plan that we want to to do, I mean, I I haven't done it.
We're already doing it, if she's in in Boston, we're already doing it.
Okay.
Well, the next step is the neighborhood groups, which you guys have been talking about, and that's the point of having the neighborhood groups, that was the point of getting the cards, a lot of that is having your your HOA hosts, your neighborhood hosts that take, they they bring the two weeks program to their.
More.
So, but that was part of my understanding of why you guys all communication, so it's just calling any other.
So so what you need at this point is uh people in.
We need other people.
Okay, I was actually asking some ideas for some of them anyway.
To me, I don't have any question about wanting to be a part of doing it. My only question is, are we ready right now? And are there some things we need to do first? So that we can kind of launch it, maybe connect it to the webpage?
Yeah.
With, maybe we'll have more information about the islands, kind of geographic, maybe a little bit more input from neighborhood groups and stuff. But to me, there's no question at all, that I I think that we definitely want to start it. But I don't know, are we ready?
I I think the big, I think there's that aspect, but right now, who's gonna play? We don't know who's gonna play, anyone.
Yeah, so we're probably.
So I think until you contact all those folks to see if they're interested bringing it to their group because there'd be no point in getting stuff off the ground if we don't have interest in the city of doing it.
So I have I have um an idea for North Point, a couple of others from North Point have uh an idea for the back forty and maybe my neighborhood, possibly. But, you know, I don't, I'm not sure how to how to find these people. Of course, we have the listing people that um that we got at the June eighth event, so we can start calling them to see if they want to.
That's the first place to start, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
Except I think you have more little quo there.
Right, that's the thing, since we don't know, yeah, since the cards don't tell you or you don't know where they, we didn't give that piece in.
Well, I I guess it's just to call them.
So they're just gonna call them on, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and so Kathy can help you with that, you know.
Yeah.
And would we have a meeting or something, yeah, that.
Well, we do, we need to sort of start setting up meetings, and we had talked about trying to book the community center for each neighborhood to gather at. Um, is there a date and time that people are available?
We don't know. You can talk to Gals.
It's the committee.
Oh, well, we can't have all of us there, we can only have three there. You know.
So you can't even have three there, remember I said you can only have two. You could have all of you there, but you'd have to notice it as a meeting or a work session, which is not a problem, but needs minutes and needs extra road on staff and I'm concerned about what kind of reaction you will get when you tell people you're going to do that.
Um, Kathy, let's just work on it.
And I don't mean reaction from me or my team. But it will be a lot of extra work on on staff, it just, the reality is, you will need somebody to take minutes. Agendaizing meetings and.
So I I go back to my original question, do, is this something that we're ready to do?
We gotta get started.
But we.
We gotta start some of that.
We can still contact people and say, yeah, this is something we're gonna launch with the website after the first of the year so they don't think we just forgot about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so so it's time to start organizing it, publicizing it and such, but to actually start the monthly
Yes.
program to kick off, maybe maybe in line with with the website and and stuff, but in terms of starting to do the whole, the actual monthly prep, I think we're not ready.
They kicked it, they kicked it off, but they're still putting things together, so.
So Casey and I can get together and see what interest we can find too.
That's the big thing, so I mean, it's a great, I think it's a great program, I think working through it is a good thing. Like you don't have people
Can do, I do.
and interested to do it in these neighborhoods and groups, and we have an actual neighborhooding group team. There's not much point in doing it if you have us scattered all over the place.
Yeah.
But you have to have groups in.
Encourage them to recruit their neighbors.
Right, yeah, you know, and once you reach out to the people on the list, maybe they'll, oh, yeah, so it's a good, make it convenient, but they'd love to do this. Me, most people. Except me, know their neighbors very well.
September is like readiness month or something, right?
Yes, I think so.
Suctions.
And I think our proclamations, we should have a proclamation in September recognizing September is readiness month.
Okay.
So um, under um new business, oh, the brother property um update, we don't know, we we're we're not sure what's going on, we'll.
The offer was made.
Yeah.
You don't know, and that's not.
But um, we we don't really have much of an update, under new business, um, new two weeks ready, Kathy and I will have to work on that. So we talked about HOA meetings, um, thought it'd be a good idea to have what you guys do, you guys do, you guys do. And so if we do this, understand that we can do two different things. We can have a advertised community meeting, um, you know, this is what we're gonna do. All of us can attend, but it has to be a community type of meeting, where we have to advertise, explain what we're doing out of the committee house and work of what we do on the eighth of June, that's one way to do it. The other way would be having um a smaller meeting for only like two people in this committee, handling with the HOA people. We can't have more than two, as I understand it, because of problems. But if we want to have a smaller group just talking amongst ourselves, that's one way to do it, so my question is you want it to be a big, would you do, or would you rather just ask your HOAs just to come in, have two or three people representing the HOA from where you are, and then come and just exchange ideas.
And so what is the, what is the, sorry, what is the goal, what is the?
The goal is basically to have, you got good ideas, she has good ideas, he got has good ideas, we don't know what they are necessarily. You know, you have good thumb tree experience, Karen will have something else, Randy will have something else. I'm just thinking we can learn from each other.
Okay.
And that's it.
So like a round table?
Like a round table, exactly, but.
So then, if, like we do our three HOAs and then we have, we're all three in there, are we in trouble because three of us on the committee room in the HOA?
I think I think you can only have two, if that.
But if we notice it as a public.
Just have to notice it.
Yeah, it's no big deal.
If it's a public meeting and then um we can all be there, or we can have, it could be like like we have here, we have the chairs filled and you have someone coordinating the meeting and we learn from each other, we can have an agenda, the um HOA people can say I'd like to learn about this, or maybe you know how to do it. You may say, here's what I want on the agenda, I don't know about this, maybe they do it. You know, does that have merit, is that something that we're wanting?
So again, I'm sorry, how to help me see it, so in the, so in the room.
You you might.
So let's pretend there are six or seven people from each of these HOAs that decide they can make that night. And so you've got all these people in the room and then you throw out, okay, we're gonna talk about emergency preparedness, and then you throw out a thing, and then you just watch the conversation that happens in the room. Yes, we have done, that has been very fruitful up in where I am, we threw out um the idea of water and then we actually came up with the idea that, okay, so two weeks ready with water, doesn't mean that I need to have water stored, it needs to be that I. Needs to be, and I've already made plans to catch the water coming off of my roof into this situation, so that we can use that as a moving over the two weeks. So I never, I'm of course picturing filling my garage with water, and then somebody had a really good idea, but it's gonna rain sometime and those two weeks count on it. And so why don't we capture that water and we'll be able to use, um, the water filtration system, we'll trick it, so we have those conversations when we all sit around and talk about it. So if you're picturing just throwing that stuff out while each, the three HOAs are.
So.
I think knowing ahead of time, the topics, saying please bring with you.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Please bring with you.
What happens?
These topics are even alert.
Maybe, maybe three or four areas.
Well, so that, and they could be like.
And it's an exchange of, of ideas, resources, and building the community of people that.
That's exactly right.
That's.
So that together work.
So Deb, Deb, we talked about this, I don't know if you were here, but, um, rest life, it doesn't sound familiar to you.
Okay.
That's probably what happened, but do we want to have just a little, kind of little get together, or do you want to have a full-blown meeting like at the community center where we're?
I see it more round table, yeah, I don't see it, I see you running, because you have a chair, but I, but you just are, you're tossing out the balls and everybody is like feeling it, that's how I. Yeah, and how that is, and then how that conversation goes, and boy, here, and then we would have three or four or two or three topics, and I would really like to propose that one of them is sanitation. Because that would be, because that is something that we, as the city, needs to know what all of these, what all of these areas are doing.
Yeah.
I mean, it's great, you've got, you know, you've got, and communication is another thing, I mean, they're pretty much, we got, and medical's in it, but sanitation's something you guys care about.
Yeah.
As far as what he's doing, and we're doing, and they're doing, we need to have a pretty firm sanitation.
Well, it's a work in progress, so y'all like the round table?
Yeah, I think the round table is just.
Two of us on the, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All righty.
And then I know, I know there'd be, I know there'd be five people that would come for my.
Well, you know, it's just, it's just, you know, we've learned so much from Randy now that he's been on board.
Right.
And I've been, you, we've been on board, and Karen, and so you're like, oh, this is great.
Right.
Um, we can also invite coordination shores, because they give us a lot of, of ideas, you know?
Right. So that's one thing that we're trying to repeat, right, we're trying to connect with the other side of the, other side, we're trying to connect with that, cause the air blinks, you know, you make, so we're trying to connect with that side.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, and so then, let's see.
What, what?
Um, is there anyone on, on, um, on the telephone that has a public comment?
Uh, we don't have a telephone, this is it.
Okay. Okay, so, um, public, um, community member comments, Randy, do you have any? Comments in general, okay, how about you?
Yeah.
Kathy? Yeah?
Yeah.
Good meeting, yes.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, so let's talk about when we're going to have our next meeting, because, no, we still have people who are going out of town, but Abby.
Next meeting, I will be here, sorry.
So what meetings next week?
Our regularly scheduled meeting was the twenty-sixth, not tonight, so I asked George if she still wanted to have it next Monday, and she's gonna talk about it tonight.
Okay.
So otherwise, it won't be until September ninth.
So. So, um, August twenty-sixth is, or is probably not a good time, how about the ninth of September?
Okay. That's the, that, that has to be okay, cause that's your second, your one, it's your second Monday.
Yes. Yeah.
This one. Okay.
So these are the standard meetings.
Is that, will everybody be in there?
January ninth works for me.
Yeah, okay.
January ninth will work for me.
Okay, and the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Okay? All right. Okay, great, so, um, the twenty-sixth of August, no, the ninth, and the twenty-third of September are all good. They're like, okay, that's really good, so, um, thank you, um, in a meaningful meeting, I appreciate your time, and, um, it's a journey.
Thank you.
Oh.